Now I have it now.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
If everyone will stand that can stand, we'll do a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, governing body matters.
Item 3.1, acceptance of Commissioner Hardy's resignation effective January 8, 2017.
Okay, I guess, first of all, I might say that we just got back from Topeka. Commissioner Blanchard and I and, what's your name over there? Our city manager, Jason Gate. He drove us to Topeka and we did get to see Commissioner Hardy installed as Senator Hardy. So, that was exciting, but we're still a little bit out of breath, we just got back. He has a letter of resignation and he says, he sent it to Jason. "Due to my being elected to the Kansas Legislature in November, I will not be able to adequately fill my office, my duties as City Commissioner beginning in January 2017. Therefore, I wish to resign my position as City Commissioner effective 8th of January 2017." And it's signed by Randy Hardy and I accept the motion to accept the resignation of Commissioner Hardy.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we accept Commissioner Hardy's resignation and then we'll start lobbying him at the state office. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. City Clerk.
Item 3.2, City Clerk administers oath of office to interim commissioner. At this time, I'll call Melissa Rose Hodges up to the front.
Ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of City Commissioner.
Of the Office of City Commissioner.
In and for the city and Salina, Kansas, so help me God.
In and for the city and Salina, Kansas, so help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Take my seat.
Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
We need help. Maybe pull a chair out for her. There you go. All right. Item 3.3.
Item 3.3, Board Appointment Reassignment.
We are assigning Melissa, Commissioner, I should say, to, as liaison role at Parks and Recreation Commission and the Building Authority Board. So, and those are good boards, for the most part, so. Well, our pretty good boards.
Our part is good.
Our part is good.
And Parks and Rec is great.
Right. Awards and Proclamations.
Item 4.1, Mayor Crawford to recognize outgoing equal opportunity specialist Sandra Beverley.
Come up front, Ms. Beverley.
I could answer her question, the answer is yes, you have to.
We won't make you stand too long. Greetings.
Hello.
Sandra Beverley was Human Relations Commissioner for six years prior to being employed by the City of Salina Human Relations Department as the equal opportunity specialist. She has investigated complaints of discrimination in housing, employment, and public accommodations. She received her bachelor's degree in sociology and speech communication from Kansas Wesleyan University and is a Kansas State-approved mediator. She has participated in many workshops regarding multicultural issues, diversity, and discrimination as a presenter and panelist. Her own family is very diverse ethnically, religiously, and culturally. Sandy, as she is known to her friends, is a widow, mother of four, and grandmother of five, and great-grandmother to one, soon to be two. I didn't know that, Sandy. Beautiful, gifted, and talented individuals. Her late mother, mother-in-law, Catherine Beverley, was the co-chair of the Human Relations Commission in 1970. And her mother, Cora Williams, is a past president of the local NAACP. Sandy has and does have many wonderful examples of individuals in her life that believe in community service and civil rights, and she is forever thankful for the advice and lessons they provided. Sandy has found great joy and satisfaction in helping citizens resolve issues and also in providing educational materials and information. The Salina Human Relations Department is well-respected in the civil rights community nationwide, and she always felt a sense of pride in being associated with the department and the work that it involved. Sandy wants the public to know that she has had the honor of working with some of the most dedicated and hard-working individuals in the city of Salina. It is not always easy to be a public servant or official, but people of Salina should be proud that some of the best people in this community work to make their lives better. Thank you for all the work you did for me when I was down there.
Why can't I go anywhere?
I think this is gonna be a mini roast. But if I can, if I can, Mayor, just a few words. I think all the great work that you've done here in the Human Relations Department and now Community Relations is appreciated not just by this board and staff, but the many people that, you know, rely on you and your judgment on a daily basis to deal with some very difficult issues from time to time. And thank you for being the kind of person that they can trust and that has the compassion to deal with, with people in difficult situations that they have. And you were the perfect person for that. The work that you do in the community is a further extension of that caring that you have. You're one of the most decent people I know, and I appreciate everything you've done for the community, but I really appreciate our friendship, and so I'd like to thank you for all of those things.
You're welcome.
And thank you, Sandy, and I take a little bit of appreciation for the fact I hired her. We had a few times where I was a little rough, but we did good.
We made it through.
We did good things.
Nobody said we always had to agree, but we always found a solution.
Yeah, we did, that's right, that's right. We did good. Thank you so very much for the thing you've done.
People wonder why and how I keep adding more things on, on my agenda, but, you know, I look, two people who got me started doing things, my brother-in-law Mace Braxton and you, you know, and...
Talked you into a lot of stuff.
And probably still can, because I know you won't be far. So, do enjoy retirement, because you have, and I say that loosely, but you've certainly, certainly earned it.
Martha Ray told me to say no to everything for the first year.
Smart move.
Mayor, if I could give a quick staff perspective, you know, in most of our jobs, we think of just a typical, routine task, and Sandy did a great job with those tasks, but in the job she did, what I saw is, is I saw that she brought some intangible skills that you can't find in just anybody, and so she brought those to us, and you know that since you worked with her. But I grew to appreciate that very, very much, and those are special skills, and I mean that with the highest accolade to you, and I'm gonna miss you, I'll tell you that, I really appreciate what you've done for us.
I've had a good time here. It's been real and it's been fun, it ain't always been fun, but it's been real. But I never doubted having people here that had my back, and that made it easier to face some of the hard decisions. So that was okay. And I meant what I said about the citizens of Salina need to know that there are people here in these positions that work their hearts out every day. And I see them in meetings, and I see them in community activities, and they're dedicated, and they're hard-working, and they love this community. Yeah, we've got some things we need to straighten out, but it's a good place.
It is, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you once again.
Item 4.2, the day of January 16, 2017, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commemoration Day in the city of Salina, Gilda Alvarez will read the proclamation.
Proclamation honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., 2017. Whereas the 16th day of January is the birthday anniversary of the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And whereas Dr. King stood before the entire world as a man of peace, champion of human dignity, and an example of love and brotherhood. And whereas the citizens of Salina do recognize Dr. King's contribution to the good of all humankind, and they do desire to perpetuate and implement the ideals expressed in his dream of peace and harmony among all individuals. Whereas the citizens of Salina remember the dream of the beloved community is very much alive and that everyone shares in the responsibility of creating a just society. We must continue to act on the legacy of Dr. King to ensure the civil rights of all individuals. Now therefore, I, K. Crawford, Mayor of the City of Salina, do hereby proclaim the day of January 16, 2017, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commemoration Day, and urge that every citizen of Salina join me in extending recognition and honor to the memory of this great leader of humankind. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this day, January 9, 2017. KJ Crawford, Mayor, City of Salina.
Thank you. I think you're fairly new to the city, aren't you?
Well, Mayor Crawford, I moved here about five years ago to Salina. I've been in the area about 10 years.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Do you, I have, do you have any other activities you want to tell us about?
I do. I will present to you, Mayor Crawford, there are some events planned for this weekend. Saturday, the 14th, there is a community potluck at Sunrise Presbyterian Church. At 6:30 PM, the entertainment will include local artists performing spoken word and vocal pieces. We also have Sunday, the 15th, there is a citywide celebration, also at Sunrise Presbyterian, at 3:30 PM. The theme for the program is Forward Together. And Monday, the 16th, there will be a noon service at St. John's Missionary Baptist Church, including guest speakers, including the President of the Kansas Wesleyan University Multicultural Student Union.
Okay, and I have a copy of the proclamation for you, so if you want to come up here, I'll give you the proclamation. And I encourage all people to come and, to come to some of those events if you can. I know I usually attend one or sometimes two of those events, and they're always really nice, and you get to visit with lots of community people. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioner, if you don't mind me interjecting a thought here, that we just had an outgoing presentation to a very substantial employee who's been here for quite some time. Gilda happens to be our newest employee, she arrived today, and she has some very large shoes to fill as she's taking the place of Sandra Beverley.
Oh, oh, okay.
So, we're very pleased to have Gilda on staff with us today.
Well, welcome, welcome. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Where am I, I'm kinda screwed up here, let's see. Okay, we've arrived at the Citizens Forum portion of our agenda. Anyone who would like to come up and tell us anything they'd like to say that is not on the agenda today, we'd like to have you do that. Okay, give your name and your address, so the City Clerk can get that.
All right, my name's Laura Brockway, well, I can, my name's Laura Brockway, and I live at 4624 West Pleasant Hill Road.
I'm Ally Weems, I'm at 2206 Falcon View Drive.
So, we are both studying kind of marketing communications areas, and lately, we've been researching vexillology, which is flag design, the basics of flag design, and there are a few rules in there. And those are, keep it simple, use meaningful symbolism, use two to three basic colors, no lettering or seals, and be distinctive. Currently, Salina's flag breaks almost all of those rules. So, we are proposing to have a flag redesign, and, here.
So, we have an example of that, and let me, we have handouts, very exciting. So I have 14, if anybody wants them. Okay.
So, currently, well, I didn't know Salina had a flag until I started researching. It's not on the computer anywhere, and I had to come, and Holly McCain actually brought me in here during the off-hours and showed me that flag right there. And so, there's a lot of symbolism there, and I think that the person who designed it, yeah, did a great job in like encompassing a lot of what makes Salina special. But I think with what I have handed out, we can also do that in a lot more efficient and aesthetically pleasing ways. So this is the proposal, and I'll kind of explain to you folks right here. So, the blue in the corners, it represents like a future that's, you know, very bright, and also the blue-collar work that a lot of people do here. The three stocks of wheat represent the rivers, the three rivers, and also the agricultural importance. And then the white represents the crossroads of I-70 and I-35, which bring a lot of business and travelers into the area. And that's not necessarily what it has to be, but it's an example of what could happen if we followed the rules of vexillology with Salina. So, go on.
We just basically thought it'd be kind of a neat addition to the town considering we've made adjustments to the whole river foundation becoming more aesthetically pleasing to our town and renovating to a new kind of, I don't know, just bringing more culture into our town and just redefining what it means to be Salina.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I don't know what we'll do, but... I don't know what the proper process would be, but we'll talk to Mr. Braxton and see what the process is for that.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
In your research, do you know when this flag was?
This one? It was in the 60s, I believe 65, but somewhere in the mid-60s, yes.
So, we've had it a while.
Yeah, we've had it a while.
Well, and I have to say, we were, I was at a, something in the park, I'm gonna say maybe it was Veterans Day, and a lady had asked me, "Do we have a city flag?", and I said, "Yes, it's up there on the park." Yellow flag, but most people, I think, if you ask them what, they would think that our logo, probably on a flag, would have been the city flag, but, so, I appreciate your initiative. I like your concept.
Sounds like you're having fun with it.
Yeah. And one more thing, the reason that I'm kind of trying to do this is I go to school at Wichita State now, and recently, they had a very organic resurgence of their flag, and I believe it's because that they used all the design properties. And so I kind of want us to kind of have that thing where like people will know what it is and be proud of it. But what is the next step now? I know you said you didn't know, but like...
I don't know the process. I was here in 1965, at least not up here.
Well, we probably ought to go do a little of our own history checking and see how it was adopted in the first place to see the flexibility that you have. I would imagine that the governing body just voted to adopt it, but we don't know that, so we need to, we, staff can check that. And then, after that, you need to decide, do you want to look at one proposal, or do you want to really open up the idea of a new flag concept, and what does that mean?
Might not hurt.
Is this the first step into that, and, you know, where it goes from there? So, we can, we can do that.
And then it would go to the agenda, and then you'd be on the agenda up here. So, it'll take a little while.
Okay.
Government moves very slowly.
Right, and just one note on this, is that I think what you managed to do there is that a lot of people talk about branding, and how do we brand this, and how do we? You nailed in three, three or four little short things there of what's unique about Salina. And I think it could also maybe, maybe we can figure out who's doing some of the branding exercises and make sure that that's perhaps included in part of, in part of that. But tell me the name, the word again?
Vexillology.
Yeah, I was a bit...
More importantly, how do you spell it?
V-E-X-I-L-L, okay, yeah, I had to write this down too. V-E-X-I-L-L-O-L-O-G-Y.
Okay.
Awesome.
Great.
Well, thank you very much.
Do I take a card or something like?
You can get one from me, probably.
You already know Holly.
Yeah, yeah, you can go through Holly, that's for sure. Okay, is there anyone else for the consent, or not consent agenda, boy, I screwed up. Anyone, anyone else for the Citizen Forum today? Anybody else want to come before the, okay, come on.
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners.
Hello.
About a month ago, the Chamber of Commerce gave a presentation on, they had a request for funding, and I'm just here to follow up on that a little bit. Oh, I'm sorry, Joan Ratslove, Salina. The, there were several people asking questions and having some concerns about their proposal. I thought it was a really good discussion. I think that it's a good thing to move forward with, talking about it some more. And I don't know, I hadn't heard anything or read anything about what your intentions were, didn't see anything in the agenda yet, so, but I wanted to keep what the Salina area workers had to say in front of you and ask, well, first of all, the Workers Coalition did not support the Chamber's request for funding, but we didn't really speak to it directly. We just wanted to ask that whenever taxpayer funds are received by an entity that is considering, or making decisions that affect working people, that workers have a voice in the decision-making process. So, I'm gonna ask the Commission to keep that in mind.
We have that on the agenda for, I believe it's the 23rd.
Yes.
Okay.
So, that'd be a good time for you to come back up.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 7, Consent Agenda.
Item 7.1, approve the minutes of December 16, 2016. Item 7.2, approve the minutes of December 19, 2016. Item 7.3, approve the minutes of December 28, 2016. Item 7.4, award the contract for the 2017 Batumina Seal Project Number 70002 to APAC Kansas Inc. in the amount of $105,004.58 with a 10% construction contingency of $10,546. Item 7.5, award of contract for the 2017 pavement sealing Project Number 70001 to APAC Kansas Inc. in the amount of $314,604.86 with a 10% construction contingency of $31,460.49. 7.6, award contract with Caterpillar to rebuild the landfill bulldozer in the amount of $300,000. And 7.7, Resolution Number 17-7427, adopting the 2017 to 2021 Capital Improvement Program Budget and the approval of the 2017 SubCIP for special sales tax projects for the City of Salina, Kansas.
Okay, is there anything on the agenda that a Commissioner would like to have removed or amended from the consent agenda?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, can I have 7.7 pulled, please?
Okay, 7.7. Okay, and they have a motion to approve the rest of the agenda, taking out item 7.7?
Motion to approve a consent agenda, less item number 7.7.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, taking out item 7.7. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Okay, back to item 7.7.
Okay, I'm gonna be winging it here a bit, since when we went to Topeka, I didn't have my, okay, I got a packets, I got packets now, I was gonna say, be winging it. You know, we had one and a half study sessions on, on this item, and I just wanna, I just wanna make sure we're not getting the cart too far out in front of the horse. A, and B, I want to make sure that we fully recognize what a couple of these on the 2017 and 2018 projects lists are, since they haven't been on there before. And is, on 2017, is the, is the, is the item for the streetscape? Downtown streetscape in 2017, or what budget is that?
When this draft was put together, the development agreement was still under review by the Department of Commerce, and no action had been taken by the governing body. So this was assembled with the assumption that any approval of a development agreement that would add to city projects would be adopted at a later date. Because we've gotten a response on that now, and you're going to be talking about that next week, we can wait on action on this, if you would prefer for it to be amended to include those projects.
Commissioners, we didn't want to be presumptuous with that, because, as you know, the five-year capital improvement plan, each of those five years are items that you have, that you know for sure, that you want to do, and you have funding for them. And then, of course, you have the identified but unfunded and for further review. For further review is when you have a project concept, but then we need to more, have more work done to give you the detail that you need, and then, for, the identified but unfunded has that detail, but there's not a funding source at that time. So, we really felt like before that's added, we need you to see where next week goes, and then if the decision next week is to go ahead and move forward with all the downtown redevelopment and the related projects, then we would come back with an amendment. redevelopment and the related projects, then we would come back with an amendment at that point in time. So, as, as Michelle said, you could either wait or you can do it this way and we'll come back and amend. We can handle it either way, but, but officially, we didn't want to be presumptuous and put it out there when you haven't taken action yet.
Okay. Because it was on, it was on the study session.
It was on some drafts, yes.
We talked about it. Okay.
A lot of it was from the perspective of the margins and how we could get all the pieces of the CIP to fit financially. But, yeah, in the final version, we said, "We don't, we're not gonna ask you to adopt that because you haven't adopted the agreement and all the other actions. But once you do that, we'll be ready then to amend this and bring it forward to you in that form."
Do we?
But we did make room, we tried to make room with, with your input on those items and the best financial assumptions we have at this time so that if, if on the presumption you would move forward with that, the project and our projects associated with that in a week or two weeks, presumably with two readings, that it fits. So, that was thought about.
So, the numbers that are in here now are lower than, okay. And do we, do we have amounts or is that something that we have to wait on?
Well, we, we don't have it in front, I don't know, I don't have it in front of me as far as, but what we did is we made some assumptions about those projects and the pieces of those projects that are publicly related so that if, if that is voted on, then it fits in without causing you to knock something out.
Okay. Is that still then?
So, that it all fits.
Is that, is, is the, is the number put in for design for next year, is it, is it in the range of 1.2 million?
I'd have to defer to Michelle.
The expectation is to borrow for that through temporary...
And I'm just trying to remember off of this study session sheet that looks identical to this. And then, 15 million for the streetscape or 12?
Well, the streetscape actually could range anywhere from about, I believe, 10.6 to up, in essence. And some of it depends on the full scale or the, I call it the moderate scale, but also there's tie-in pieces that as you, if you go forward and you're looking at design, we'll look at tie-in pieces here and there, whether it's parking lots, sidewalks, other street improvements, things that tie in that you think need to, maybe some landscaping, lighting, those types of things that could fall into it. But that'll be part of the scoping. And so, those are things not necessarily anticipated by the downtown project, but that you'll want to anticipate before you would award a contract. So, that's why I say it could be 10.6 or so and up depending on the final scale. But you'll get to decide that as part of the sizing of that and the scoping of that.
We were talking about we'd probably take, take that into consideration as we worked on that.
Yeah.
So, the two, so that, so just the two quick questions that sort of relate to that and, and the actions, the future actions that we'll be taking, this being considered more closely at that time, is that if, if the downtown project moves forward and those streetscape items enter this CIP the way it is, nothing comes off of here that's on here already?
That's the expectation, yeah.
And if it doesn't go through and pass, do items that are further down the list come into it at that time or does it stay the same?
I think they could. We could come back and say, "Here's your capacity," and then you could go back into the list and decide what you want to do with it. It could affect the timing of projects to a degree. There's not really much change in timing, but it very well could affect going back into the list.
Has, has that pushed other items back in the CIP then?
Not really known, except I think the...
No major projects, no.
Yeah, the one item that was modified a little bit that I recall was the, the, what we call the gateway signs, interstate signs.
Right.
We moved that down a little bit instead of, I think, starting with two, went to one.
And we bumped it out one year.
Yeah. So, there's a small impact there, but otherwise, it was more of a strategic approach on how we fund and finance the projects at hand.
And the funding source is sales tax?
For which piece?
Design?
That, yes.
Streetscape design, yeah.
Streetscape construction, both of them, sales tax?
Well, the expectation is a temporary note and general obligation bond, but financed through the sales tax, yes.
Right. Okay.
As one point of clarification, the 10.1 million dollars for the streetscape project is the total project cost, but the city's expense is likely to be 3.5 million of that with the remainder, if everything falls into place, to be funded with star bond proceeds. So, the impact, the financial impact on the capital improvement plan would be the remaining 3.5.
Okay.
Just one other question that hadn't realized until just now, looking at it again. On page 13, the downtown redevelopment, utility relocation, those figures are just a portion of the total cost of each one of those projects? So, that portion of the...
That is the total for the utilities, yes.
Yeah, and those are pretty gross estimates at this point in time.
So, that's one that would move forward if the development agreements, et cetera, were approved?
Yeah, we would start with that budget. And then, what would happen is the budget gets refined once you get through the design phase and the, particularly with the waterline project, which is a major project, we'd refine that estimate. I think the two sewer relocation projects are probably closer because those have been, should be pretty close to being, already having a finalized design. But the Santa Fe Waterline would be refined further. And both we would look at before we're ready to bid.
And none of that funding would be repaid through the sales tax or star bond?
The sewer relocation projects would, I believe, I'm gonna look at Michelle, but presumably would come from the utility capital fund that we have.
That's the plan right now.
The Santa Fe Waterline, I think, I don't, it could go either way. I think depending on the health of that fund, it could come out of there, but I believe it's actually programmed as part of the streetscape cost at this time because there's a utility component to that. But a lot of it may depend on, is it a full 2 million or does it come in less? I defer to Michelle on the final number there.
Again, a lot of it will depend on, once we have some design done and some scoping, we'll know what the true cost is. We may have to borrow for some of those things.
Was that, was that too baked into your number, Mike?
Yeah, that, that number is provided by the design consultant. And my understanding is that they tried to account for water on Santa Fe in their number.
So, that was, when you're 3.5, that had included, that was included in the mix?
I believe so, yeah. Until we finalize design and go to market, it's, excuse me, it's difficult to say for sure, but I think that was their intention.
And assuming you go forward and you're looking at the full streetscape, depending on what the estimate might be and the scope and what you want to do with it, you would have the ability to look back at the utility fund and say, "Could the utility fund take on a portion or all of that if you wanted to stretch the sales tax and the other pieces of the streetscape?" And so, then, we would look at that and look at our other utility projects and try to determine if we feel that it fits. And so, you'll be able to have that conversation as you go forward. It's not quite as important now, but it will be if you go forward. We will, we'll bring that to you in, in those forms.
I guess I was gonna ask that same question in reverse order. Is that 2.4 million something for the sewer and the waterline that would not be done if it was not for the streetscape? Because if so, so it's technically part of the streetscape, but it's not gonna be counted as part of the total streetscape number?
Right. The two sewer relocation projects would definitely not be done. They're specific to downtown private projects. The Santa Fe Waterline, it's really a question of timing. That's a very, very old waterline that will have to be replaced at some point. So, it really makes sense for us to do it now. So, it's sort of triggered in timing by the downtown streetscape, but quite honestly, we need to be thinking about that at some point anyway. I think, look at Martha, about 90 years old, 80, 90 years old.
That's correct.
Yeah, so, it's, it's, we've, we've pretty much got her useful life out of that one, I think. So, we would need to do that at some point. Wouldn't necessarily have to be in the next year, but fairly soon, I would say.
If we're gonna do that, we might as well, sure, put in a new waterline, that's for sure.
It's a little disruptive.
Think so.
And just, and this is just a general, general question, just looking at the big picture. What does, say, all this goes through and the streetscape happens and all that, what does it do when we add on the potential whatever amount we're gonna bond for a river project? What does that start doing to our bonded indebtedness?
The plan is that that will happen a little later after the debt service for Kenwood Cove falls off and the amount for the river would be equal to the amount we're currently paying now for Kenwood Cove. So, the expectation is that Kenwood Cove is done in 19, 2019, and then the river debt wouldn't start until after that. So, it would, it would maintain that same level.
And the, and the other thing with that too is as you look at the bonding amounts, when you're, when you're thinking about special aid bonds that are related to an economic development activity and market, market-type bonds, you're looking at coverage ratios. And what happens is, is you work with your financial team and particularly your bond underwriter who is responsible to sell the bonds to think about what the coverage could be. Is it 100 and, do you have to have, in order to, in essence, sell, whatever the number is, 100% of that number of bonds, do you need revenues coming in to have an insurance coverage of 120%, 30%, 40%? They help you to get to that. And so, that helps hedge some of that risk because you have to do that from the bond buyer's perspective. So, that also, of course, comes into our financial planning as well. And then, the other thing we would look at is, is, you know, how does the, how does the capital improvement program set itself up just in case you'd have a slump year? You know, over 20 years, you could have a bad year or two. Part of the coverage helps you with that, but you can also plan in your CIP to have a backup plan as well. So, there's layers of how you can deal and mitigate with a potential bad year. And that's, again, the bond underwriter or financial advisor, working with our bond counsel. We try to set all that up to try to mitigate any potential economic downturn throughout the whole cycle of a bond. It's not foolproof, but it's, they help you. They're pretty conservative on their end and that helps us out quite a lot.
As far as timing goes on some of these, because you did mention that you'd look at financing some of these with temporary notes and then buying those out with the GO bonds at, at the proper time. Any, any thought to some of the rhetoric at the national level about removing the tax-exempt status for municipal bonds and what effect that might have on...
Hoping it doesn't happen?
On the timing of, yeah, on the timing of taking out the temporary notes and then...
If it happens, then the impact is minimal.
I mean, would that, in your opinion, would that escalate interest rates?
That'd be a negative. I think it would because it affects the, it affects the, kind of the, the final, the financial performance of the bond from the bond buyer because having a tax-exempt bond is a pretty, is a nice deal. And, and those bonds fit into a portfolio when they have a range of different types of investments that they like to have. And so, it does change that to a certain degree. So, odds are, it would probably increase the cost. I, I don't know if it would affect the, kind of the, what I call the buyability, whether that there's interest in buying the bond, but certainly the cost would, would be a factor for us, I think. I don't know how much the...
That's the fear is that the demand will go down and the cost will go up.
Does it represent any, any significant movement in the, in, in the dollars here?
I don't really know until it happens.
Okay.
It's all speculative at this point.
Any other questions? Okay. Do you want to go ahead and have a motion on 7.7 and pass that?
Commissioners, real quick, if you don't mind, before you do, just one more thing I would like to hit. I think it's important for the public and for us to hit this as we go. When, when you asked the folks to vote on the sales tax, one of the practical commitments that was made is that you would increase the funding for street improvements and, out of the sales tax. And historically, that's ranged, it's ranged really probably from about a million up to 1.8 or, or 2 million, maybe. There was a year that was a little around there. In the last year, it was 1.7. And we said, "What you committed to was to add 2 million to that budget," which is a really big chunk. And so, you'll find in your capital improvement plan, the budget is 3.7 million for 2017. We've added that 2 million in there for you. And I think that's really important because what, what the projects that you just voted on with, that you, before you got to this are just a start, but there will be $2 million more in investment in our streets this year than in prior years. And the expectation is to keep it at least at that amount. There may be years that you might be able to actually spend more than that on streets. So, that's a really, really good thing and it's a commitment that you made. And we just wanted to highlight that for the public.
Primarily geared towards neighborhood level streets?
Yeah, it helps us to get into the neighborhood.
Neighborhoods, right.
Yeah. Then, there's a lot of ceiling and crack ceiling and surface ceiling and, you know, micro-surfacing and, and taking off that top layer that's worn out and putting on another layer on top. And so, there's all kinds of different maintenance approaches in those residential streets, but that's what we said. It gets us into those because we've kept up, I think, fairly well with the main streets, but we've had a hard time getting into the residential. And now, this gives us the opportunity to do that. Pretty exciting.
And I sent a list to them of streets that I thought, so please feel free, Commissioners, to keep a list.
We'll always take a list of streets and then those guys will run it through, look at the pavement management system, try to get a feel for where they fit, but we'll always take suggestions.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Amazing how many people have come up to me and told me what street they live on and it needs to be fixed. So, anyway, okay. 7.7, I'll accept a motion.
Can I ask a quick question? Is, I, I'm happy with making a motion here if that's, if, if it's just by resolution. So, if we need to change something, we just change it by resolution.
Yeah, it's pretty easy to change later.
It's not a big deal. Okay. I would move to the adoption of the 2017 to 2021 capital improvement program budget, resolution number 17-7427.
Seven.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 177427, adopting the 2017-2021 capital improvement program budget. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Okay. We have no development business. Do we have any other business that we'd like to bring to the attention of the public?
Yeah, I, I just have a quick pass-through, thank you, to Public Works for, got compliments last week for the very efficient and great job that was done on the clearing of the streets after the snowstorm last week. So, just wanted to pass those along to you and your world-class staff that, or award-winning staff.
Award.
And, right, and much appreciated.
Of course, if we get eight inches, it might be a little different.
They're, they're world-class.
Eight or 10. Okay. Anything else under other business?
Just like to welcome Commissioner Hardy to the city commission.
She said Hardy. But that's okay.
It's not Commissioner Hardy.
I'll take her.
Commissioner Hodges.